Good afternoon, I'd like to call the January 17th meeting of the Board of Trustees for Johnson County Community College to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Role call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Schlist.
This evening's visitors include Blake Koger, Sharon Mitchell, Dr. Wayne Burke, Nicholas Hunt, County Commissioner Michael Ashcraft, and Dick Carter.
Thank you, and thanks for being here. Next item, awards and recognitions. Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. You know, we get to work with some wonderful school districts in Johnson County, some of the finest in the nation. And I have to say that one of the most enjoyable, most collaborative school districts that we have the opportunity to work with is Spring Hill School District. Let me give you a little bit of information about the Spring Hill School District. They have more than 3,000 total students and about 450 employees between seven schools. Those seven schools are four elementary schools, one middle school, one high school, and a virtual reality school. Is that correct, Wayne? Virtual reality?
Virtual reality.
All right. The district encompasses 71 square miles. That includes portions of Johnson and Miami Counties. About 70 percent of the faculty hold master's degrees or higher, and they have an average of 15 years' experience. All district schools average above state and national academic benchmarks. Approximately 85 percent of students continue their education after graduation. These high school students also can receive college credit via our College Now program that we host here at Johnson County Community College. The person who is so critical to all of this is Superintendent Wayne Burke. Dr. Burke is the Superintendent for Spring Hill. On July 1st, 2015, Wayne officially stepped into the position of Superintendent. He has held the role of Superintendent-elect through the 2014-15 school year, and when he stepped in after 15, it was a very smooth transition into the Superintendency. Beginning -- a little bit of history about Dr. Burke. In 1997, Burke was the Assistant High School Principal and Activities Director of Spring Hill High School for four years, and Principal for another five years. He left Spring Hill in 2006 and served as the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources in the Derby School District in Derby, Kansas. He did that task for three years. He returned to the Spring Hill School District in 2009 to serve as Assistant Superintendent before being named the Superintendent-elect in 2014. Wayne has his Doctorate of Education from the University of Kansas, a Master's Degree in Education Administration from Emporia State University, and a Bachelor's Degree in Business Education from Kansas State University. He is also a member of numerous national and state-level professional organizations, as well as many local community groups. You know, thanks to Dr. Burke and our relationship, I can tell you when there's an issue or something comes up, we sit down across from one another at the table and can resolve it. And that's the collaborative spirit which he oversees the Spring Hill School District. Tonight, Dr. Burke is joined with two Board of Education -- or two Board members, Sharon Mitchell, as well as Nick Hunt. A little bit about those Board members, because we all know how important, be they Board members or trustees, are to any organization. Sharon and her husband, Tony, have lived in Spring Hill since 1996. They have five children. Their five children have or are attending Spring Hill High Schools. Sharon earned her Bachelor's Degree in Interpersonal Communication from Nebraska Wesleyan University. She left the academic publishing industry in 1998 to be a stay-at-home mom. In 2015, she began working for the Spring Hill Chamber of Commerce as President/CEO. Nick Hunt. Nick and his wife Jennifer moved to Spring Hill in May of 2014. They have four children in Spring Hill Schools, two in middle school, and two in elementary. Nick is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps and has spent most of his professional career in banking and finance. Most recently, Nick made the transition into the commercial vehicle industry and currently works as General Manager for the largest commercial vehicle dealer network in North America. Nick served as a co-chair on the Steering Committee for the One-to-One Technology Initiative in 2014-15. Standing Board members. So, Dr. Burke, if you could please come forward.
On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we have this special timepiece with your school district name emblazoned upon it. You know, it's interesting, we start a new semester and we talk about where did the time go. Some of us are wondering where the last 49 years went for the Kansas City Chiefs, and we'll find that out in the next couple of weeks. And this college is just celebrating its first 50 years this year and looking forward to the next 50 years. But we were reminded by Longfellow that time is the life of the soul, and you have really represented the life of the soul for the Spring Hill students. We appreciate the partnership, and on behalf of our Board, thank you very much for advancing teaching and learning for the young people in your school district. We appreciate the partnership. Please, Dr. Burke.
Well, we just had a very late-night Board meeting Monday night, so I'm going to keep this brief. First of all, just a couple of things. Thank you so much. Spring Hill, if you don't know where we're at, we're just -- our neighbors just head straight south and you'll run into our district. We are the fastest-growing district in the state, and I think right now about 85 percent of our students take at least one class through Johnson County Community College. Sharon has three children that have taken classes here. Nick's children are a little younger, but they, I would assume through College Now or Quickstep, will take classes. And I can tell you, I had two children. My daughter graduated with 18 credit hours. My son will graduate -- hopefully, my son will graduate this year with 18 hours. And I can tell you, my wife and our bank account, thank you for that. But it's been a great relationship. A long, long time ago, I got to be the Assistant Principal, and it was just wonderful that our kids had the opportunity to not only take a regular ed class, but get that dual credit, and to actually do it in our own building. Safety and security, not having to put kids on the road is just phenomenal for our community. And as we've grown, we've added more classes, and we're very, very appreciative that sometimes it's easier to keep an eye on the big districts. And with us growing, it's nice to know that we're just not an afterthought, that you've always had a great relationship with us, thought very highly of us. With the ATC and the challenges that have come with that, you've always reached out and worked with us. And we just want to continue to have a great relationship with you for many, many years. And so, the next 50 years, as you grow, we'll be growing with you and hopefully sending more students to Johnson County Community College. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Next item on the agenda is the open forum. The open forum section of the Board Agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the Board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly-scheduled Board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the Chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each Board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the Board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise are subject to review by the college or Board. We have one registered speaker for this evening. Blake Koger, if you'd come forward, please, and state your address, even though you've been here a time or two before. For the record, that would be helpful. And you have five minutes, Blake.
Thanks. So, Blake Koger, 248-53 West, 148th Court, Olathe. You all know why I'm here. Today marks what is essentially our one-year anniversary of coming up here and speaking with you all and trying to work to get some sort of, you know, efforts to reinstate the track-and-field and cross-country programs at the college. So, nope, nobody else could make it here but me tonight, unfortunately, but I'm here to remind you that we are still here. I'm reminding you that because we're encouraged with the numerous meetings that Brian has been able to have with just about everybody in this room. I think we were encouraged with a lot -- with how a lot of those conversations went. I think Brian came away with it and kind of shared with us that he felt there was maybe some mutual interest in coming to some sort of collaborative effort to solve some of our differences, help build a better athletic department, and build back up the alumni association. With that, we decided in good faith to kind of give you guys a two-month break from hearing from us up here all the time, as well as kind of on social media. We just kind of let it go to side. But we can't help but feel a little bit of complacency. I'm here to remind you that we aren't going to be complacent and that this is too important. So, our one-year anniversary happens to mark the year of the 50th anniversary of the college, and we're here for that. We're here because it matters. We're here because we have really high expectations for this college. We have a vision of how a truly transformational organization can affect this county and how that one should be embedded into the community and the alumni base like never before. I am constantly encouraged, though, not by what's going on at the college, but by the hundreds and literally thousands of people that we've connected with or heard from that are finally paying attention to what's going on and share our vision, share our passion. People have seen, even just in the last few years, programs be cut, even though single mothers couldn't pay a single dollar more for an athletic department program. They've seen $110 million in facilities master plans become enacted. They've seen efforts yet again to make inroads into Stoll Park. They've seen lowering of the mill as a return of money to the taxpayers, now turning around and raising tuition to students. Not to mention, within this timeframe, we've had a few other faculty negotiations. I know there's been an HLC accreditation report that outlines a number of areas for improvement. But in this time, while we're trying to work on the track issue, all we've heard is a list of "can'ts." Why we can't do this, why we can't fund that, why an alumni program won't work, just a bunch of "can'ts." And I'm here to remind you that a year ago, we came here because of the track programs, and in this 50th anniversary year, we're still here because the only thing holding back this college is actually taking a step forward. Thank you.
Blake, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I know that you've had a meeting with staff, and hopefully those discussions will continue as we pursue this issue. Student Senate Report, Mr. Harris Webster.
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year. Glad to be back. So, over last time I met with you all, we just had one Student Senate Retreat, and so we've all been on break. I just wanted to say thank you to those who came and spoke at the retreat, Dr. Sobchak, Dr. Weber, Angelina Lawson, Greg Musil. We also had Chris Gray and Kate Allen there, and Rachel Leers, if I'm saying that right. So, thank you to everyone that came and spoke at the retreat. Dr. Sobchak and Dr. Weber were able to speak about why the administrative staff is proposing the tuition raise, and Dr. Weber gave us some great insight on current issues that students are facing at JCC, as well as providing just a summary of the student breakdown, which is really beneficial to scan all the stats of how many students are using financial aid or on the meal plan, and what the general breakdown of, you know, if less people are coming or enrolling in JCCC, what that looks like as some categories are increasing and some categories are decreasing, and where we can help to just get students here. And Chris and Kate spoke about 50th anniversary and how Student Senate can help partake in some of those events, as well as Angelina and Greg talked about just the responsibilities of being a local politician and what it means to just make decisions for your community and where you should base your decisions. So, thank you so much for coming and just giving us that insight. But yeah, just looking forward to a great New Year with you all, serving alongside you to help students, and that's basically my report. So, no PowerPoint today, so I'll spare you all with that, but yeah.
Thanks, Tiger.
Yeah, thank you.
Trustee Musil.
Well, I just think it's impressive that how much time and effort these students have put in, and Tiger, as a leader of having a Student Senate Retreat where you listen to people on the administration 95 percent of the time, and a little bit from Angelina to me, about to figure out what the numbers mean and what the numbers are, because often what we hear doesn't do that kind of analysis. I don't know where Tiger went.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. No, you're all right. And for instance, I just feel the need to respond to Blake's comment about us giving money back to the taxpayers because we rolled the mill levy back two times in the last four years. In the last four years, while enrollment or tuition has remained flat, we have taken $18.5 million in new money from taxpayers in Johnson County, which is a 21.5 percent increase in those four years. So, when I hear somebody say we've given money back to taxpayers, I say we haven't taken as much from them because of assessed value increases as we could have. And I think it's important, and I think the Student Senate recognize that when they look at the numbers, there's no other alternative. Whether that's the right number or not is up for policy debate, but it can't be debated that we have given money back to taxpayers because we in fact haven't. Thank you.
Dr. Sobchak.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Tiger for holding the retreat yesterday. But also, what people may not be aware of is how he mastered the information that he was given. I think he's probably one of the most knowledgeable person -- one of the most knowledgeable people around regarding the reserve, because he really could break it out. He had a lot of wonderful questions and did a fantastic job yesterday of orchestrating that. So, it's one thing for people to take numbers. It's another thing for people to take numbers and actually know what they're talking about. So, Blake, I mean, Tiger, you did a great job. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Tiger. Appreciate it. Appreciate the work you're doing with the Senate and all the activities you have going on as well. College Lobbyist Report, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we last met, we now have a new governor who's been installed in office. We have new legislative leaders and a new vision for Kansas state government. And things kicked off this Monday with the swearing-in of all of those various positions. And even though today is Day Four, the word amongst my colleagues around the Capitol today was it felt like Day 60. And maybe I'll explain a little bit about that in my report. I'm just going to hit some highlights on a few of the things. Last night, the governor gave her State of the State address, and there are some bulleted highlights in the report that I've presented to you. I think there's a few key things that are worth mentioning. She's presenting a one-year budget, and that is to make sure that they take a look at the K-12 funding formula and that they resolve those issues once and for all. Her budget does leave a 9.1 percent ending balance. It's about $686 million. And so, those are all good goals to have for budgeting, and we've not been in a position that we can do that in some of the years more recently in the past. Her budget also addresses capers and the funding of capers. I'm going to talk about that a bit below in the report. And then, the amount for the restoration of higher ed budget is not consistent with what the region's asked for. And I think we'll see some dialogue about that particular item, specifically with the budget committees, as it relates to what they propose in their process, through the committee process, and once that makes its way through the entire process and goes to her desk. The -- one of the things that we saw early on, before we even saw some of the proposals, was almost an instant wall being put up between House and Senate leaders and the new administration. I think we will continue to see that play out throughout this session. One of the ways that we've already seen it play out will -- or very soon we'll see, is the tax bill that is coming through the Senate. I think that's sort of the first shot fired across the bow, and we'll see how the Senate handles that, how they pass it over to the House. Much of what occurs in that bill would make some of the items in the governor's budget not possible based on the way the tax policy would return or decouple from the federal policy that was passed last year. Another good example, and I think this one -- the reason this is a good example is because it wasn't known when the bill was prefiled what would be in the governor's State of the State address or how she would intend to address capers issues. But there are two approaches now that we'll see as it relates to public employee retirement system. Senate Bill 9, which has a hearing on Tuesday of next week, would take $115 million from the State General Fund and transfer that to the capers fund. That money would make up the interest payments, as well as the payment that was to be made in 2016. It would be a one-time payment that would bring the caper system to about 70 percent of solvency. That's a number that probably hasn't been seen since this whole debacle was discovered with the unfunded components of capers. The governor has a position in her budget that would reamortize many of the capers pension bonds over a period of several years. There would be a cost to that, of course. Anytime you refinance, you're going to have interest payments. It would make the payments whole to the capers bonding system. But so, we have two different approaches, and I think we're going to see that play out many times over this session between the legislature and the new administration. So, I just cite that as an example of something that is getting ready to unfold before us. Not a lot of bills in the system yet. It's kind of a weird late start. This is -- we always start on the second Monday, but because the first Tuesday was so early in January, this makes us have a very late start to the session. But one of the bills that I will be adding to the tracking system is a bill that was filed by new Representative Brandon Woodard here in Johnson County, and it would be a bill to repeal the statute related to the state appropriated funds for lobbying for or against gun control. It simply just repeals the statute. Bill hasn't been scheduled for a hearing yet. Don't know if it will be, but again, that's an issue that we have followed very closely here at the college off and on for several years. Finally, as it relates to some of the higher education or JCCC-specific issues, we entertained 11 Johnson County delegation members through our meetings that we held in December. Many of the trustees were at one or more of those meetings. And again, it serves as a great opportunity to continue to build upon the relationships that we have with those folks, and in some cases, we were establishing new relationships with legislators who were newly elected. Kate and I continue to make appointments and visit with many of the delegation members who did not have the opportunity to be with us here on campus, and will continue to do that. The Higher Education Day was today. I think that in -- as we review that event, I think it's always difficult to hold an event the very first week of the legislative session, and this was not our -- we did not schedule this. We participated, and we were there. It also gave us the opportunity to interact with a number of legislators, not just the Johnson County delegation, but I think that we missed the opportunity to visit with a number of others had there been additional time to market the event and make sure folks were available to come see us. I think one of the highlights that I noticed in particular was that Lieutenant Governor Rogers made his way around every table that was at the event this morning. So, I think that, again, speaks volumes of the attention that the administration will be paying to folks that are in the Capitol to deliver their message. I think finally, just to kind of keep you in the loop, and how important it is to do what we continue to do, to build those relationships, there will be a number of people from the college that will be in Topeka throughout the session. I know that the small business development folks will be up there the first week of February. There's another event that they have in March, so we'll have those folks there. We have a number of employees that participate in the Johnson County Area Chamber Leadership Programs. All of those folks will be in the Capitol as well, and so I make it a point to make sure that we see them while they're there, and if there's an opportunity to connect them with a legislator, we do that as well. Finally, I've still listed some important dates that are on the calendar, and then JCCC had the opportunity to have a table at the inauguration. That's not an uncommon event. We've done that in the past. We were there with the other six state universities and Washburn University, and so it was a good way to make sure that we were represented in honoring the governor as she takes office. So, I would stop there, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter, thank you. I have two questions. The first is, your comment regarding Day Four seemed like Day 60. Does that imply, then, that hard work has already begun and we'll see lots of progress? Because, as memory serves me right, we seem to put off a lot of things until Day 60 to get anything done.
Yeah, the session, because it starts late, is going to go later. It's projected to go through May 17th, being the final day. I think there's a lot of tension in the air, and that's what I meant when I talked about being like Day 60. It feels like we've already been there for a good part of the session.
And regarding the repayment back to capers, the $115 million from '16, I guess I thought it was more than one year of borrowing from capers to the general fund. Is that the total amount?
My understanding is that includes not only the amount that wasn't paid back, but also the interest that is due in the $115 amount.
Anybody else? Questions of Mr. Carter? Trustee Lawson.
Just a few questions. So, the executive action that our new governor took around discrimination practices, how might that impact employment practices and if it impacts institutions like JCCC?
I don't know that it impacts JCCC. It's for state employees only, and I can't speak to the hiring practices that will be put into place by the state. I don't know that there'll be any change that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then, I think you have a legislative agenda for this year. Have we seen that yet? I haven't -- what are we looking at when we go up there?
We have a -- I think you might be referring to the statements of principle. Is that the --
Legislative agenda, okay.
So, I don't know that I would call it an agenda, per se. I think it gives us guidance when issues come up before the legislature, so that we kind of know where we need to be when we're developing testimony, what type of issues we need to respond to. And I believe we're -- I believe they were emailed out?
They were sent this week.
Okay.
To trustees. And they were also distributed at the breakfast and lunches we had with the delegation.
Okay, so if I was not there, so how do I get this?
But it should have been -- I think it was emailed this week.
Okay. Yesterday?
It was either Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
And then you said, so you're a lobbyist for the state level. Who's our lobbyist for the federal?
I believe that we handle that internally at the college, and I believe Kate Allen is responsible for federal issues.
Okay. Do we have a report that is given on the federal level? Because we have a Congresswoman who is also an alum, and I haven't heard anything about that.
I think we'll address that when we go up to meet with her in February, but at this point in time, there's really no specific agenda at the federal level.
Next month, it's coming. So, I think there's -- okay.
I think what we've tried to do, Trustee Lawson, at the federal level, is always support ACCT's agenda of the Pell Grant distribution. And in fact, I think ACCT did some really good work to get that to a year-round distribution for the summer work. But yeah, we've tried to handle that just with our own people and our contacts with our local delegations and when we go to NLS in February.
Okay, so no one's officially paid to be a federal lobbyist from us?
No, that's true. That's correct.
I would like to know, Mr. Carter used to do that.
That's correct.
That's right. And we made the decision not?
Two years ago, I think it was, two or three years.
I was here, I was just --
Yeah.
And Kate Allen's not part of the foundation anymore, so it's not private and lobbyist mixing with the federal?
She is involved with the foundation, but was your question on the private and public? What are you?
Well, so you're saying that Kate Allen's the federal lobbyist for us, but when we've gone to the DC, she's brought foundation papers?
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily describe her as the federal lobbyist, but she is the staff person communicating with our federal delegation on issues.
As the foundation, though?
As a college representative, yeah. Through the foundation, I guess, because she's employed through the foundation.
Okay, but the foundation is separate from us.
That's correct.
Right. So, that's just confusing for me. Were you going to say something, Kate?
Kate's salary is paid for by the college. She's a college employee. She oversees the foundation. The foundation is a 501(c)(3). That's the way we do it. The federal history is that, Dick, when were you able to secure that earmark with regards to sustainability?
Eight or nine.
When did earmarks go away?
Ten or eleven.
Right. Earmarks were really our best opportunity to exert influence and perhaps get something that benefit the college, but once that went away, there was not really too much we could make happen in Washington, DC. And so, like Jerry mentioned, we work with all the community colleges to support Pell Grants, like we did last year at the summit, when all the community colleges hit the hill to talk about increasing Pell Grants. But with regards to other issues, we really haven't targeted any -- But with regards to other issues, we really haven't targeted anything to lobby for. There's not really that much for us to do there. So that's why we do our best when we're up there for the summit, and Kate oversees that and arranges all the opportunities to get together. We'll be in everyone's office during, in February.
Anything else, Trustee Lawson?
No, that's it, thank you.
Trustee Cross?
Mr. Chairman, I forget. Dick's sal, Mr. Carter's salary, excuse me, is paid partially by the foundation? Is it?
Dick's?
Contract.
It's a contract.
Excuse me, thank you, contract. But half of it or all of it now?
All of it.
All of it.
All of it.
And it came about, is that legislation that was just referred to?
It's for the state, right.
About not being able to use money to lobby against the gun control.
Yes.
Dick, the eight point nine million for restoration of higher ed, is that for all the six universities and nineteen community colleges?
Yeah, I was hoping that wouldn't be asked. The budget, the budget just got released today, and we have not had a chance to pick through it and figure out just exactly where the dollars are going to fall out. It's obviously significantly less than was requested both across the state university portion as well as the community college and technical college sector.
Because I think we're asking for twenty-five billion just for community colleges?
Just for community colleges and technical, yes, correct. You are correct.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Appreciate it. Thank you. And I hope that day sixty doesn't end up being day one hundred and twenty. Human Resources, Trustee Lawson?
Yes. Let me just get in here. We did not have a meeting this month, but we just, this, about around three-thirty today, we met with VPs and staff, Trustee Musil and I, to go over some of the new healthcare policies that are going to be rolling out. So that's going to happen. We changed the date and the time on the HR Committee, so that's going to be the first Fridays. The next one is Friday, February fourth, at ten-thirty in the morning.
It's still Monday.
Excuse me, yes. Can we say this again? Can you tell me the new, that was Monday?
They can report, and then after that, it'll start on Fridays.
Thank you. Okay. There was a little bit of back and forth email on that, so I apologize. I am happy to report that, as we looked at the healthcare providers, one thing that was really important to me is making sure that the corporations that we are looking at to, that they have equality for LGBT and transgender faculty, staff. And so there's a human rights campaign index that rates corporations, and I am happy to announce that all of the providers that came to the table that were chosen, that we'll be moving into, we're one hundred percent rating on that. So that was really exciting. And then we also looked at just some RFPs that we're going to be reviewing in the human resources as far as when the bids go out, how that language is expressed. And then we'll keep moving forward. We had typically ten meetings a year, and then this year, we went down to six, and that was around, because last year, there was a lot more policies bringing forward, so we had more meetings. And so it was nice to know that we could also expand that. So we've also added a March meeting to that, and then if there's things that come forward, then we can add more meetings. So anything else, Trustee Musil?
Thank you very much.
Learning Quality, Trustee Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Learning Quality Committee met January seventh. We had a very brief meeting. Kate Allen kicked us off. She was in place of Emily Bierman, who was in either Chicago or New York, some large eastern city, trying to procure things for the additional people to, for the Performing Arts Series. But Kate listed out all these shows, is currently listed in the packet. I think everyone has, is that, I wasn't clear, is that public at this point or not?
Public, January twenty.
Okay, okay. So only the trustees have it in there? Okay. So as the trustees, you've all seen a listing of the shows in the packet, and a couple of things that came up in discussion. Number one, things that I wasn't aware of, so I'll maybe, hope maybe some of you weren't, certainly people in the audience may not be. But we offer student tickets for five dollars to those performances, and those are generally fairly well utilized, and accounted for about nine percent of sales at the last season. So anyways, Emily and her team are doing a great job getting a robust calendar for the upcoming series. I do have a recommendation. It is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the administration's recommendations to allow contract negotiations for groups to perform in the Carlson Center during the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty academic year, as shown in the board packet.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We also heard about the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one academic calendar. We always try and do calendars a few years out. We are a little late on this one because of the negotiations that went on last year. There's been a very robust team of folks that have been looking at this for a little while. Their notable part about this calendar is that we're transitioning from sixteen-week to fifteen-week semesters, and so they had to do a little bit of jiggling. But it appears everyone is very happy with this calendar going forward. So it is the Recommendation of Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one academic calendar, as shown in the board packet.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? I giggle because this is usually a tough thing, because everybody has either been on a calendar committee or knows somebody that has or is affected by a calendar, and all have opinions about what the date should be. So I applaud you for getting that resolved. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that would conclude my report.
Thank you. Trustee Ingram, Management?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Management Committee met at eight AM on Wednesday, January the ninth, in this boardroom. The information related to the management meeting begins on page nine and runs through page twenty-nine in the board packet. The Management Committee received several presentations from staff. Barbara Larson, Executive Vice President, Finance and Administrative Services, presented information for facilities' use and equipment rental agreements for the college to provide CDL training on the Kinkay Group site. This information can be found in the consent agenda on page fifty of the board packet. Tom Clayton, Director of Insurance and Risk Management, reported on the college's insurance program and covered the Insurance Policy Digest for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. Rachel Leers, Associate Vice President of Financial Services, CFO, gave the monthly budget update. She also reviewed the semi-annual report of budget reallocations. This report is found on pages ten through twelve. Next, Rachel explained that financial services and procurement services will solicit information from potential vendors for bond counsel and financial advisory services for the college, as well as investment management services. Results will be reported to the Management Committee no later than June of two thousand and nineteen. Tom Pagano, the Vice President for Information Services and CIO, provided a quarterly update on projects in information services, and this report begins on page sixteen of the packet. Mary O. Sullivan, Director of Client Services, Support Services, highlighted activities within her area. Client support services include multimedia services, the Technical Support Center or the Help Desk, and computer lab coverage. I was impressed with Tom and Mary's leadership in adding student employees to information services. In the fall, excuse me, in the summer of two thousand and fifteen, information services added three student workers to their ranks. But by this past fall, information services employed fourteen students. These on-campus positions provide important experience for students, and in turn, these students provide valuable insight about students' use of technology to our staff. Janelle Vogler, Associate Vice President for Business Services, presented the Single Source Report, as well as the summary of awarded bids between fifty thousand dollars and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The summary is found on page nineteen of the board packet. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facility Planning, presented information on a recommendation for approval of construction of a standalone garage for the Oral Health on Wheels vehicle. The garage cost, which was estimated at three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, would be funded from savings identified in the guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, of the new CTE building. Currently, working with J.E. Dunn, staff estimates savings within the CTE GMP of roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would be returned to the college. The recommendation to proceed was tabled until next month. Board members asked staff to investigate whether needs could be met if the building was expanded. So we hope to bring that recommendation back to the full board next month. Mr. Hayes also gave a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and this report is on page twenty-three of the packet. Next, he provided information on current progress of construction projects on campus. He reviewed the report on the financial status of the facility's master plan projects, and that report is found in your packet on page twenty-four. The Management Committee has a number of recommendations to present this evening. We have six. The first recommendation is for the establishment of a Kansas Tort Claims Act's Special Expense Liability Fund in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to be used to pay insurance premium and deductible retention expenses related to tort negligence claims. A similar model has been used successfully by the college for its workers' compensation program. Mr. Chairman, as permitted by KSA seventy-five dash six one one zero, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the college's administration's recommendation for the establishment of a KTCA Special Expense Liability Fund in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to be used to pay insurance premium and deductible retention expenses related to tort negligence claims, and I will make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
If I may, Mr.?
Trustee Cross?
Is one hundred thousand dollars enough? I'm not on that committee. It seems low, but I don't know what insurance premiums mean.
Barbara, a comment about that?
It is enough, and we certainly worked with our broker, brokers to identify. We've had very few claims, very few issues in the last five years, so it is based on a recent history.
Trustee Musil?
Well, I just want to make it clear. This is not a liability insurance coverage limit. It is to pay premiums or your deductible. So if it's not enough to cover a big claim, but it can pay for your premiums or pay for your deductibles.
Right. I mean, I skim, thank you, Mr. Trustee. I skim the, many of the reports we get internally with respect to litigation or whatever, and I thought it would be. I'm just asking as a point of clarity.
Trustee Luntsham?
And Barbara, correct me if I'm wrong. This is, we're first implementing this. It's new.
Yes.
And if we need to make adjustments in the future, we can, it can come before the board, and we can adjust as necessary.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next recommendation was for a transfer of funds from the college to the foundation. The Sustainability Committee has requested that twelve thousand dollars of recycling proceeds be transferred to the Johnson County Community College Foundation to be used for scholarships. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees authorize the transfer of twelve thousand dollars from the Sustainability Initiative's funds to the college foundation to be used for student scholarships, and I will make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I think that, since two thousand and twelve, is over a hundred thousand dollars, so that's really, again, commendable of that transfer.
It is. Thank you. Our third recommendation is for signature authority for certain financial operations of the college. The following individuals will be listed as authorized signers. Dr. Gerald L. Cook, Chair, Mr. Greg Musil, Treasurer, Dr. Joseph M. Sobchak, President, Dr. Barbara A. Larson, Executive Vice President, Finance and Administrative Services. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to designate the aforementioned individuals as authorized signers on the college's accounts, and I will make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. There were two recommendations based on bids. First was a bid for the Carlson Center first-floor restroom remodel. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from the Wilson Group for RFB number nineteen dash zero-two-one, Carlson Center first-floor restroom remodel in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, with an additional ten percent contingency of fourteen thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars to allow for possible unforeseen costs or a total expenditure not to exceed one hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars, and I will make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next bid is for the purchase of automotive lifts and associated equipment for the new construction automotive base within the new Career and Technical Education Building. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal for quality automotive equipment for the one-time purchase of automotive lifts and associated equipment for two hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-one cents, and I will make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our final recommendation this evening is to grant property right-of-way rights and easement conveyances to certain utilities, specifically Atmos Energy Corporation, Johnson County Wastewater, and the Consolidated Main Sewer District of Johnson County. This is related to the construction of the Career and Technical Education Building and the Fine Arts and Design Building, along with renovations to the gymnasium, student center, and library on the main campus. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the grant and conveyance of the above-specified perpetual utility right-of-way and utility easements associated with campus improvements set forth above, and that the Board authorize the President to execute the necessary documentation to grant and convey such right-of-way and easements, and to take such other action necessary and appropriate to effectuate the same. And I will make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, and congratulations on an inaugural report. Management usually has a number of items. I would say, and you may be commenting to this as well, Dr. Sobchak, that I appreciate the communications that staff sends out during this construction time. I know it's an inconvenience to a lot of people, and particularly if the jackhammer is outside my window, or the caterpillar or whatever is making all the noises right outside my door. And I know it's an inconvenience, but I really appreciate how you've communicated, managed, and hopefully that that will be efficient and effective and not make too many people unhappy every day. With that, President's Recommendations for Action. Treasurers' Report. Trustee Musil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board packet contains the Treasurers' Report for the month ended November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Items of note include, on page one, the General and Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. November was the fifth month of the college's two thousand and nineteen fiscal year. During November, the college made principal and interest payments on three different revenue bond series. That's reflected in Section Five of the Treasurers' Report. There's a Series two thousand and eleven, a Series two thousand and twelve, and a Series two thousand and fifteen revenue bonds. Total payments were made of one point four eight seven million dollars. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of November thirtieth in all funds was sixty-nine point eight million dollars, which is approximately nine point five million dollars lower than at the same time last year. And expenditures in the primary operating funds are all within the approved budgetary limits. So it's a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ended November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, subject to audit and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report to the board, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. First, this monthly report to the board, if you get a chance, again, take a look at it. The first thing you see is the Academic Achievement Center had thirteen thousand and forty visits from the students last fall. Thirteen thousand students used that facility. If you go to the bottom of the page, Colab, during a two -month period last fall, had five hundred and fourteen events. That's strong testimony to the engagement that we have on this campus and also across the community, because the report lists all these things that our faculty and staff are doing throughout the community, and it's extremely impressive. So please take a chance to read that. In-service began this week. We had around eighty sessions with many positive reviews, and there was probably another ten to twelve larger-scale things that were going on. So a lot of activity was being experienced by everyone on campus. The highlight was the presentation by Alex Sheen. Most of you were there. Alex talked about his life's journey and shared with us great insight into his organization because I said I would. Boy, thank you, Karen Martley and Farrell Janob for their efforts to make this in-service very, very special. Enrollment looks okay. Or good. I'm waiting for Dr. Weber to correct me on this. We seem to be up a few students in headcount, down a few, down a few credit hours. So we have more students taking fewer hours. Probably maybe up one percent, one point five, down, something like that?
Less than, we're less than a half percent up and down.
Okay, so it's reasonably flat. Yeah, but it's still, we're probably ahead of most schools across the Yeah, but it's still, we're probably ahead of most schools across the country that are continuing to experience those declines. Construction projects, why, the Fine Arts and Design Studio and the Libby Career and Technical Education Center are amazing. Very exciting what you're going to see when you tour those facilities. I'd like to recognize, with regards to the FADS building, the heroic performance by the faculty and staff who are doing everything within their power to get that building ready for classes next week. Kudos to Jim Lane, Rex Hayes, Barbara Larson for their leadership and commitment to make sure that students can take advantage of that when we open our doors. If you drive by the Student Center, you may notice that, as Dr. Hook just referred to, a good portion of the front facing has been removed. I'd like to recognize the faculty and staff in that building who somehow managed to continue to serve students in the midst of being in a construction zone. No small feat, so, Dr. Weber, thank you for your leadership in that regard, as well as you, Barbara. If you look to the northwest from here, you'll see all the grading work that's been done for the new athletic complex. We really are excited about that going in. When are we going to start, when are we going to start seeing things happening down there, besides the grading?
Spring, maybe March.
Spring. That's fantastic. Earlier, we spoke about our Statements of Principle with regards to our efforts in Topeka. We'd like to go into a little bit more detail on that now, so I'd like to invite Kate Allen to the podium, and she can share with us some background and insights on how that document came to be. So, Kate?
Thank you, and yes, we touched on this a little bit earlier, so I will be a little bit briefer, but wanted to make sure that you all received the Statements of Principle with the session beginning this week. We thought that was appropriate. Our Government Affairs Task Force has worked on that for several years now. We've had this in place, and yes, it might look familiar, because many of you attended, all of you attended, our December legislative series where we had our state delegators attend, so thank you for that 100% participation, that was wonderful. Again, this document is just really a general reminder to you all of its existence and use. It's not something on the website, it's not a fancy brochure. It's really just so you all know, this is something that we use, that if we're ever asked to take a position at the state level on an issue, create test, or submit written testimony, or attend a live hearing, that kind of thing, it would all be rooted and informed by this document. So there's just a few bullets on there. The first one is the largest. Again, that's the focus on local control, but just so you all know that that's in existence, we wanted to provide that to you today.
Any questions from the Board?
Trustee Snyder.
So, thank you for sending that around, and I generated that. I was sitting in a member's office this week, and who knows that I'm a trustee, so what are the priorities of the College? And I kind of fumbled through, trying to think back what I saw on that list, and I think the long and short is that we're not asking for anything this year. Is that how you would express that? Certainly, we're going to respond to how things shape, but we're not actively going there and saying, "We need X, Y, or Z this year."
We are part of a 19-member consortium of community colleges. We are unified in our approach to the legislature with those schools. I can give you the history and our involvement in Topeka since 1992, pretty much. I will say that the only time that we've ever asked for something in a proactive fashion, and I like to thank Dick Carter, because he was incredibly invaluable in his counseling expertise, it went down in flames. And I, we don't have the muscle to make things happen, but what we do have the muscle to do is to stop things from happening that will hurt Johnson County. So I think it's fair to say that our posture is always defensive, and we've been able to exercise that when there's the opportunity to do so, but it's been, it's been very difficult to make something happen on behalf of Johnson County at that legislature, in the legislature, and that's just the way it is.
I'd like to recognize, Trustee Cross, but before I do that, you've made me think of something that I think would be helpful, Joe, and not tonight, but some of that history that Dr. Sobchak talks about is the Senate Bill 345, which was a big issue in 1999. So I think it'd be helpful for us to understand the history of that. That's kind of a request. Secondly, is Senate Bill 155, which is active, and the funds that go to help high school students that take certain courses, so...
I would concur. Both of those are listed in our Statement of Principles, and I have some fuzzy background on those, but especially as we give those out to legislators, they certainly, most of them would not have that background, the new ones, for sure.
Exactly, that's a good point, great point. Trustee Cross.
Yeah, a couple of points in response to that, if I may. One, I campaigned in 2013 about the involvement we had in Topeka, and I have to say I'm pretty happy with the involvement this administration's had in Topeka. On the gun issue that we fought for four years, on funding, pass-blocking and holding, being held harmless, I think our approach in both DC and Washington have been good. I personally disagreed with the cutting of a federal lobbyist. I don't want to relitigate that, but I think on balance, it's been pretty good in what was a very difficult environment, 2013 to 16. I just wanted to take a point of privilege, if I may, for Kate Allen to say, my wife was not able to go Monday night, but my uncle from Hayes, who's a Fort Hayes State alum, and I'm always shocked that he watches those things, so I'm just dropping in a Regent's school, came, and you and your husband and everyone at the table was so great to him, and he was so thrilled to be there, so thank you for having us and making that happen, Mr. Carter and everyone.
Thank you. You enjoyed it?
Trustee Musil.
I just think it's important to note, this is called a Statement of Principles. We don't try to pick issues every year because we don't know what's going to come up, and so the direction we try to give Kate and Dick and our President is, these are the principles that we stand by, and I think the two things are, probably three things, don't do anything that hurts accessibility to higher education, fund things that are important to higher education, and leave us alone for local control on those things that we want to do locally. And whether that's a decision on guns on campus or other things, that principle is what we want to live by, because we think that the citizens of Johnson County have elected us to make decisions for our county, and we'd rather not have Topeka tell us what to do.
That's a good summary, good summary. Anything else for Kate?
Thanks, Kate, appreciate it. The last topic of discussion here, perhaps the most important of today's, I would like to share a video that was put together by the son of Tyler Kundoff. Tyler's our Sports Information Director. I think this video is extremely relevant to where we are today. For those who may not be able to handle this, please feel free to leave the room, but can we go ahead and run this? For those of us who've grown up in Kansas City, we can remember like it was yesterday when the Chiefs played in the AFL Championship game, and I believe it was '67, and then the next time was in 1969, and they went on to win the Super Bowl. This is, this is a big week in Kansas City, and so I'd like to wrap up my report by saying, "Go Chiefs."
I'm so moved, I'd like to call for a meeting adjournment. We have other agenda items.
I'm worried, Mr. Chairman, this sets a precedent that if Notre Dame were to ever win a national championship again, we would have about a 30-minute video.
Can I get a grievance form, please, Becky?
I would like to, I would like to respond to the President's report, and again, I've said this before, I, I hope you take time to read it and study it, because there's great information in there that helps us understand many of the good things, positive things, that go on this campus every single day. I was intrigued by some people getting together, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact names, but to have 27 puppies on campus to help, to help students and others deal with stressful days, I think is really commendable. The Colab activity you talked to, but what touched me about that, Dr. Sobchak, was the number of public schools that are using the Colab for various ages of students to get students on campus, and the multiple community uses, so I really applaud the Colab folks for getting that, getting that out. And the danger with starting to talk about some is you leave out all the others. It's like recognizing the winner at the Oscars. That was the best movie, and yet what about all the others? But another uniqueness is the effort by the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy to go on their own time and resources from their funds to make breakfast for the American Cancer Society Hope Lodge for 60 people to experience waffles and pancakes and fruit cups and et cetera, et cetera, when they don't have a chance for a good meal, so those are some examples. And then I was moved by the effort by the degree check and enterprise job scheduling with our departments to come together to make more sense out of the data that we have in terms of how we, how we use data and how we can, we can track where students are in scheduling and so on, and those are some details that come out in the committee works that don't come out in the board meetings, but I would encourage you, again, to look at that report, because a lot of effort goes into trying to inform us about why we'd even want to think about being a trustee at this college, and when we begin to see all those very, very, very positive activities every day, that, that at least inspires me to wake up in the morning and be proud that I'm a trustee at this college, so thank you very much for doing that. I don't believe we have any old business tonight, we have no new business, but we have reports from...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Lawson.
New business?
I'm sorry.
Can I, can I add some new business?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to schedule a discussion and a vote for revisions to our nondiscrimination ordinance, and I'd like to see us vote on Trustee Lindstrom's Alternative Tuition Plan, which does not raise rates for Johnson County residents, but that it keeps the rest of the metro out of state and international rates increase. I would like a second.
We can...
What was the motion?
So you put that as a motion, is that what you said?
Yeah, so I'd like to schedule a discussion and a vote for revisions to our nondiscrimination ordinance, and I'd like to see us vote on Trustee Lindstrom's Alternative Tuition Plan, which does not raise rates for Johnson County residents, but keeps the rest of the metro out of state and international rates increasing.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I can answer.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Trustee Musil, and then Tanya.
Well, I think what Ms. Wilson's going to tell you is there's an agenda published under the Kansas Open...
Well, if it's to schedule future discussion, I certainly would...
I don't know what that...
Not tonight.
Okay.
So, to add a new item to our agenda, for discussion purposes tonight does not require a vote, but if there's going to be a vote, there needs to be a majority vote, a vote present, so ready to then vote on the motion. So I'm not sure I understood.
Well, I guess, as I interpret the motion, and I was, I was thinking that that would be for further discussion, certainly not tonight, because it wasn't published for the agenda tonight, but that, that if that's approved by the Board to add those two things back, then the recommendation would be they go back through committee discussion for that detail. We have committees that deal with each of these, and then let those committees bring it forward to a future board meeting. Trustee Lindstrom.
So, this is, this is not an official motion, you're just, you're just making a request of the Board to consider bringing, discussing those two topics. Is that, is that, do I understand that correctly?
I mean, I feel like I'm wanting to make a motion that this is something that we schedule for discussion and a vote, so whether parliamentary procedures say that we, you guide me, so that's kind of what I'm asking for.
Okay.
So either we can discuss this tonight, and then...
I do not believe we'll discuss it tonight, because it wasn't on a pre-printed agenda for discussion tonight, but I would, I would consider action by the Board to either vote on this, to run it back through committees, to get it on a future agenda of this Board, if it comes through the committees accordingly.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I mean, out of curiosity, what would the trustee like to say?
Well, again, it's not an agenda item for discussion tonight, so I'm not going to...
I understand, the Council just said that we could discuss it tonight and not take a vote on it, so I'm asking, as a matter of due process and an opportunity to be heard, what would she like to say?
So to just reiterate, right, if there's an item, a new item brought up on the agenda for discussion purposes only, that does not require a vote, so if that was a safer add, then you could moderate that discussion?
Is that what you'd like, is to share your viewpoint about that, with no vote on the Board?
At some point, I would like a vote, so if that's...
Then we can't do that tonight.
We could discuss tonight and vote later.
That's...
Counsel, is that, that's my understanding.
Well, I, I guess, Trustee Cross, what I'm saying is that if there's interest of the Board to review those two topics, that it comes back through the committees that we have in place at their next committee meetings, and if the committees feel worthy to bring that to the full Board, they bring it to the Board, just like we do everything else. That's my recommendation, as I interpret Trustee Lawson's request.
Could Trustee Lawson restate and maybe do it separately, one at a time, in what exactly her motion is? Yeah, is it, is it, because I understand, when we were talking, it's not a motion to send it to committees, it's a motion to schedule a board discussion and vote at a certain time.
It's a board discussion, not sending to committee.
Okay. So, has it been seconded?
Wouldn't it be appropriate for the HR Committee, perhaps to send it to the HR Committee?
Well, the due process would probably be HR, I guess, and the tuition would be management.
I mean, I would like it to be discussed as a board, so that's, that's the direction that I would like, and that's what I'm asking, is for it to be discussed, but if, I would like a scheduled discussion and a vote to revise the nondiscrimination ordinance, I can go into more detail what I'm talking about here. And then, I would also like to see us vote on Trustee Lindstrom's Alternative Tuition Plan that does not raise tuition on Johnson County residents.
Trustee Snyder.
Trustee Lawson, have you read the College's current discrimination policies?
I have.
And what, in your view, do you find lacking in that?
Gender identity.
That there is absence of that?
That's all I'm asking to have implemented.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we...
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor now, and before we get another motion and second on the floor, I think we have to go through due process and vote on this motion and second on the floor.
You could substitute, but...
Tanya?
So I would ask if you are, so if there's a motion and second on the floor, then to vote first, I wouldn't like to vote on that, which requires a majority vote.
So, Trustee Lindstrom.
Well, I don't know that what we're, and I would ask Trustee Lawson and Trustee Cross to reconsider your motion and second. I have no problem bringing your issues back to the committees, and then those committees are going to make a presentation to the Board as a whole, and the Board can discuss it at that time. So, I, I'm not trying to go through Robert's rules here, I don't, I don't, but I just see it's a lot simpler than that. If, if you want to discuss these things and have, and all of the trustees have an official position on it, I think that, that can happen.
So, Tanya, I guess a question that I would have is, we try to have no more than three trustees on a committee, so in the case of Trustee Lawson wanting to come to management to explain her viewpoint on tuition, for example, would that be a problem with having four trustees there for that?
So, I agree, explaining them into two separate conversations we've been running now would probably be helpful, because they're both very different and throughout the process. So, on the policy revisions that we have, whether for policies, which we do have a nondiscrimination policy, that would be appropriate to go through a Policy and Procedure Committee in conjunction with HR to get, to review, to discuss appropriate language and to make recommendations. It goes through the Policy and Procedure Committee, and then the policy actually goes to the Cabinet for review, and then it would land with Human Resources Board Committee, which you've seen in your capacity on that committee, and then to the full Board. So we just had a Policy and Procedure Committee today, meeting today, there was about eight policies, one on the State Services side and one on the Finance side, that went through the Policy and Procedure Committee today. It has a cross-representation from the administration, the faculty, student organization, liaison, et cetera, and so that would be where that policy would start and travel through the process of getting amended, and that's not making, that policy should have been through that process before, since I've been on board. The second one, tuition, has already been at the Board level, and I would actually advise that it maintain or stay at the Board level, and then unless there's additional research or any other new information, I guess, that needs to be reviewed by the committee, otherwise I think it would come back to the full Board. It would not be appropriate for, for Trustee Lawson to...
Thank you. So, Trustee Lindstrom has requested if the second and the motion would withdraw, and we have, I take the procedure that Counselor Wilson has suggested that the discrimination issue goes back through the process, as she's described, that'd be appropriate, and then we'll deal with the tuition issue. So, are you willing to withdraw the motions, or do you want the Board to vote on whether we approve both of those in one bundle?
Um...
I guess it would probably be, if the person making the motion wants to withdraw, and if the second will withdraw, then we'll take that motion off the table.
If you're, if you're not satisfied with what happens, you can always make another motion and have a second. I'm just thinking that that, this would allow you to get what you want to talk about discussed.
I'd appreciate a vote to be able to discuss where this goes from here, so you're saying that we would just, at this point, have the Board decide if we go for any further into a vote, is that right?
If I may, you're sorry.
The motion and the second, as I understand it on the floor right now, is to have the Board consider both of these items as one motion, and I think our Counselor has advised us to split the two. us to split the two, and, and my implication of even allowing the motion and the second was that go back through committee, as I've described. So, if we keep it on the floor and vote, it'll either pass or it won't pass, and then it's another discussion. Trustee Cross and Trustee Musil.
Yes, thank you. I, I'm willing to consider withdrawing the second. I, I remember four or five years ago, a wonderful man, a fabulous Johnson County, John Stewart, was upset about faculty, sabbatical. And there was quite a discussion, and he, he got worked up about it and curious about it. So, I suggested, as chair of the learning quality committee, how about we remand that, not table, not run away from, just send it back through committee, and then I was stuck with years of, of sabbatical reports. But it was nice to know that we have all these wonderful things going on. So, I'm suggesting, perhaps, to Trustee Lawson, I think it would be appropriate that we discuss this and have a vote someday soon. But I, I probably would withdraw my second, subject to advice of counsel, that we do this in an appropriate form and come up through the committee system because it is a necessary issue that we need to discuss and frankly face at the college.
Are you talking about the, the nondiscrimination ordinance?
Well, both, and I'd like to know more about distinguished service awards, too, frankly, adding that to the pile.
Trustee Musil.
Well, these issues deserve consideration by the college. They have had consideration in the past. The tuition one was considered last month and voted on. And I believe we follow Robert's rules, that the only way to reconsider it would be for a member of the prevailing party to ask for a motion to reconsider. I think that would be the proper, proper motion for that. On nondiscrimination policy, it's, we have a policy. If we want to revise that policy, we have a procedure to do that.
Right.
And the procedure is not to bring it up in new business when nobody else knew about it. And I appreciate it's an important issue to you. It's an important issue to all of us. But if, if we're going to go forward with a process that says, when I have an issue I want to talk about, seven different trustees, six of us come up to the chair and not tell them about it and bring it up, we're not going to get much done here, and it's not going to be done in a, in a reasonable fashion. None of us here are prepared to discuss any of those issues because we didn't know they were on the agenda.
Right.
I think the chair has, has provided the, the appropriate method that we have here, which is to utilize the policy and procedures committee, the HR committee for the nondiscrimination policy. I, I don't know what you do with the tuition item because it's already been voted on by this board, and I think the only way to undo that is to reconsider it. And I know Tanya's got her hand up, but we are flailing now because we are doing something that has no process, nothing in our normal process to do it.
It's just something new.
We have processes.
It's okay.
What?
It's just something new. It's okay.
No. But the problem is, it, what is, it's not new, and we have an item, I, I have an item I want on the agenda, I go to the chair, or I go to the, the administration and say, can we discuss this at the appropriate committee? And if we, if we're going to get rid of that, then we're just going to have a free-for-all on issues, and I don't think that's what this board-
Let me make this simple. I thank the board for the discussion. I'm going to with-
Let me recognize Tanya first and then back to you.
Once again, I appreciate you cutting me off. Again.
Well, it's not again, but-
I just wanted to clarify-
It is again. We're not looking, we'll back the tape, Mr. Chair.
The Robert Rules, and there's a lot of different versions or options under that. The ones that we review with the parliamentarian every year is that to amend the prior board action would require two-thirds of those present, so it's a super majority vote at that point in time.
Trustee Cross.
I have nothing.
Okay. So, are you still willing to withdraw the second based upon the motion, or where are we?
Well, that would have been the easiest way out of this, wouldn't it? No.
Is there something, it sounds like you have something to say.
Trustee Musil.
I will vote against the motion. It has nothing to do with the substance of the discussion. I want to discuss both those topics, but I'm not going to support a process that allows us to come up with new business-
Right.
-and force a vote that nobody on the board knew was coming except one person who brings it up, because we will have, it will be chaos, but it will not be a, it will not be a meeting that anybody is watching thinks is a professional way to handle this.
And I will vote against the motion for the same reasons. Are we ready, Trustee Lindstrom?
I would, I would ask the, the motion maker and the second to, to withdraw their, their motion for-
Thanks to the courteous request from the trustee, Mr. Lindstrom, I withdraw the second and would ask staff and the administration that we please discuss this through appropriate channels.
Thank you.
I'm happy with that as well. Thank you for explaining that a little bit more. I just wanted to make sure what my intention was is going to be put forward. I do appreciate that if we can bring through the nondiscrimination ordinance through the human resource committee, I think that would be great opportunity to do a presentation and be able to discuss that and get a recommendation to move forward. So, as well as, yeah, this was not something that was meant, when I look at where to implement input, it's new business. So, for me, this is something that feels appropriate and something that I feel that's part of Robert's rules, is why we have an outline that says new business. I've requested it to be scheduled. It's something that I'm asking of. And so, withdrawing that motion to be able to put that through human resource committee, I understand that for the nondiscrimination ordinance, that's fine. And so, I withdraw the other one as well. And so, if I were to bring that forward and ask for it to be reconsidered, because it has already been through committee, is that correct?
Correct.
So, it has to stay at the board level. So, then my motion would be to have us look at that, at what Trustee Lindstrom's alternative tuition plan, which does not raise rates for Johnson County residents, I'm asking for reconsider. Is that correct?
I think, I think what I'd like to do, if the board is acceptable to it, is that we have voted on the tuition prior, and back to Trustee Cross's requests of wanting to know why you want to raise that issue. We, we voted on that in December through a very detailed process, through budget workshops throughout the year, and we voted on it at that time so that we could publicize information for marketing materials for next semesters and what our tuition, tuition rates are going to be. So, I, I guess if the board is wanting to reconsider your viewpoint about that, even though we discussed it at length in December, I guess I would recognize you to say, why do you want, why do you feel that discussion needs to take place? And, and we will allow the discrimination to go back through the process. That's-
I appreciate that.
So, Trustee Lawson, why, why do you want to reissue the discussion on the Lindstrom, and David wasn't here for the December meeting, but I think you referred to, has his, his idea of no Johnson County increase. Talk about that.
I felt that there was one plan presented, and that was it, that afterwards, Trustee Musil had mentioned in passing that there was a comment that Trustee Lindstrom had said in management committee about the possibility of Johnson County residents not having a rate increase. That was not discussed on. There was no other plan presented, and it was dismissed. So, to me, that is not an open discussion on these plans. I would like to see both plans put forward to understand what these, what that alternative plan was. And there wasn't an opportunity to discuss that. It was one plan to roll out, and then that was the only vote that we could take.
Well, we did discuss it a little bit in terms of what that amount would be, is I think it was like $270,000 is what the amount was if we, we didn't increase Johnson County tuition. But Trustee Lindstrom.
Yeah. Trustee Lawson, there, there was no specific plan in management meeting, and I think it was November. Dr. Larson, I, I, I full-on financial staff and Dr. Larson that I would like to know what the impact would be of not raising tuition rates for Johnson County residents. And we did have that discussion, and there wasn't a consensus to move that forward. So, that's why the plan that was recommended, recommended to, to the board, the board as a whole, was presented. There, there are many times, at least in my experience, that discussions occur in committee meetings, that all of that information, to, to the best of the staff's ability, it's put in the minutes, but all of that, it doesn't, doesn't make the discussion at the board every time. So, but it was, it was a question. There was no specific plan. It was a question on my part to staff.
Trustee Musil.
Well, I'm, I'm not supporting revisiting the tuition decision we made in December, and it was not discussed in passing. It was discussed in some detail. I brought it up as a courtesy to my trustee colleague, Mr. Lindstrom, who couldn't be at the December meeting, but who had suggested it as an option to analyze and get the numbers on at the December management committee meeting. So, out of courtesy to Dave, I brought it up as an, as another idea of how you could split, split it up if you wanted to allocate certain tuition increases to certain classes of our students, Johnson County, out of district, out of state, metro rate. So, it was discussed, and to suggest that when a recommendation is made, there are no other alternatives that are ever possible, underestimates the power of a motion to amend that recommendation motion. When I moved to recommend the, the increase of $1, $1 a credit hour for Johnson County residents to go from $93 a credit hour to $94 a credit hour for the first increase in four years, that would still keep us as the lowest mandatory fees and tuition of any community college in Kansas, I believe that was reasonable, and I got a second. And if anybody wanted to discuss that or change that, they had to move to amend it. And they could have had a plan to raise it $5 an hour, cut it $5 an hour, or keep it the same for Johnson County residents. And I know that you oppose that, Trustee Lawson, and I appreciate that. We're making judgment calls on that. The average student takes seven credit, seven credit hours, so that's $7 a semester that we are raising on the average student, and some people think that's too much, some people think it's about right, some people may think it's not enough. But we, we discussed it, we debated it, we had a motion and a second, and we voted on it. And if, if there's a motion tonight to reconsider that, I will oppose it for the same reasons I did, I, I said in December, and I'll reiterate those, that our, the percentage of our revenue, general revenue that is paid for by tuition has gone from 25% to 18%. And even with this increase, it will be 18% in the 2019 school year. The percentage of our revenue that has been paid by property taxpayers in Johnson County, including students and their parents, every time, on their house or their apartment, or every time they go buy something at Panera, has gone from 52% of our general fund budget to 65% of our general fund budget, while the state, as Trustee Cross always, always mentioned, has stayed the same. So, the state has been shortchanging us, and we have to make it up somewhere. During the four years, and I mentioned this earlier, from 2016 fiscal year to the 2019 fiscal year, the amount of ad valorem taxes we've, we've received from property taxpayers in Johnson County has increased by 20, $18.5 million or 21.5%. So, trying to find the right balance as a judgment call is what we tried to do in December, was to say, is $1 a credit hour for Johnson County residents and $2 or $3 for out of district and out of state, I'm not sure the exact ones, is that a fair balance? Now, we can take a vote on reconsidering that tonight, and then we can take a vote on reconsidering it next month, and we can do that on all the votes that we have. One of the things in our board policy, our board policies, is to try to, as best we can, when a majority or a consensus of the board has been reached, that we try to support that. I don't care if we, if you follow, if you want to make a motion now to reconsider it and get a second, then we'll vote on it. But to suggest it wasn't vetted, discussed, debated, analyzed, and considered is simply not accurate.
But motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we still have other agenda items, Trustee Cross, and we're going to finish the agenda. We've got several other people that have been waiting here all evening for-
I'm sorry. I thought we were at the end.
No.
New business.
Thank you, thank you.
Other boards I serve on, we do new business at the end.
Thank you.
Apologize to everyone. I apologize.
So, is, am I clear that I did not get a second?
I withdrew the second. I'm sorry. I, I'm confident that staff and the administration will take this up through the committee process.
Well, to clarify-
You're talking about nondiscrimination. We were talking about-
Tuition.
Trustee Lindstrom's alternative tuition.
Yes, that's fair. You did not get a second on that one, although I shared your dissent.
Moving on.
Okay. So, you still want a motion to vote on the tuition? Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, the motion, I, I thought I said that was the-
So, right, so to add an agenda item on, what is it, you need to vote on, you need a first vote to add it.
Right.
So-
Voting on the tuition rates, right?
Right.
Voting on whether or not you'd like to add this, add an agenda item.
So, Trustee Lawson, do you want to make the motion to add the tuition discussion to the agenda?
Sure. I make a motion to add the agenda item that we reconsider Trustee Lindstrom's alternative tuition plan, which does not raise rates for Johnson County residents.
So, we're voting on an amendment to the agenda. Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none. Motion fails.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Reports from the fac, and, and we'll take the discrimination issue through the human resources.
I appreciate that.
Faculty Association, Dr. Harvey, follow that.
Well, I was at a sabbatical presentation today that was so good, and I, the next person that came after them, I was like, I would not want to follow them. They were really great, too. So, so speaking of following things, the, first I wanted to say, we should all say a prayer for our art faculty this next week, like daily, please, because they are real excited about their new facilities and their new space. They're so excited. So, they were like, we hate to complain. But I was like, are you surviving? And they were like, let's see, Mark Carrigan said, I'm teaching sculpture starting next week, and there is nothing in my sculpture studio. So, we were talking about how they're going to have a very tentative schedule on their syllabus this time for now at the beginning. This first few weeks are going to be rough. But that, we also talked about their creative lesson plans and how students might learn things like, what do you do when your dark room isn't completely dark yet? How do we fix this? So, I think they're actually going to learn some really interesting things in the process, the students who help. I helped a move into a science building when I was in graduate school, when I first got there, and I learned a ton of things in helping with a move. So, actually, in problem solving, all of that, the, the students that happened to take those classes this semester may get the best education ever. But we should really, we should really seriously pray for them this week because they are going to be, Nita is going to be, it's going to be hard. It's hard when you have a whole classroom of students show up and the desks and chairs aren't there yet. So, things like that, you know. So, anyways, but we're real excited about the new facilities, and it's going to be amazing. The PDD did start this, our professional development day started on Tuesday, and it's a great opportunity for me this week to just get around and see people that I normally don't see and to hear from voices and hear about things on campus that I might not have the opportunity to hear about. So, it's been a very full week. I did want to highlight just a few things in case you wonder, like, what are the faculty up to this week? There are a lot of sessions that we attend. I don't get to attend as many of those as I would like because I'm just busy with other meetings and other business. But, for example, tomorrow, our science division will be meeting. A lot of departments and divisions will meet tomorrow morning, if they haven't met already. And we're going to be talking, our main agenda item, I think, is the, the renovation plans for the science labs over the next several years. And so, that's going to be something, it's going to be the first conversation that we've had, been able to all have as faculty in science about that. So, that's like something that's going to happen tomorrow. Tomorrow at noon, every in-service week, on the Friday at noon, we have something called World Cafe for Assessment. And it is a really important event. All the people who teach a particular course with me, we all get together and we make plans for, this time, we're going to be coming up with a new assessment project. I sort of lead that. That's my, like, my job in our group. We divide duties, and I'm in charge of assessment. And so, I'll be leading that effort, but we, we plan assessment projects for our class. We plan on how we're going to execute those. We, we sit down and evaluate our data from the last semester, and we decide how we can improve our teaching. And there's a whole room full of people from all over the campus, meeting with their colleagues, working on projects like that at this, at this session and learning about it. Some people are learning about how do I assess my students' learning. Some people are just analyzing data and deciding on what changes can I make to, so my students learn more of what I want them to learn. So, it's a really productive event. Today, I saw some sabbatical presentations that were amazing, from faculty that have honors field experiential learning trips planned, where they scoped them out and went there and practiced something in advance so that they can now plan to take- there and practiced something in advance, so that they can now plan to take students to do that. To, one was a service learning project that students can now do, that the faculty member themselves served throughout their sabbatical at this facility, so they could see what their students, what, how they could, you know, choose appropriate students, what students would be doing when they went here, and then they want to incorporate that in their course. There was a librarian who gave all sorts of resources for faculty that, that have been developed, and easy resources that we can use within Canvas, and ways that the library can come and help our students, you know, find tool, have tools for how to do research for a paper, or whatever they need to learn. So it was really interesting, some really cool things were done on some sabbaticals, at least from the ones that I saw. The Master Teacher Workshop was this week, there were 14 faculty that participated in that. That's an intensive retreat. I was able to go last year, and it was really, it was really great. I learned so much and got so many ideas about things I could try in my class. A lot of collaborations, cross-discipline collaborations are sprouted in that kind of an event. So it's a great event, and I'm really glad that, excited for the faculty that got to participate in that. We did have a guest speaker that spoke on the theme of "Because I Said I Would," and talked about, at our all-staff meeting, talked about the importance of, you know, making commitments and, and then following through with them, and a lot of it was very much like goal-setting, like setting stretch goals for how you're going to do something for other people, and follow through with that. We talked about just being a person, you know, just being people who fall, do what we say we're going to do. At the beginning of semester, I have had a few moments, not long, to start working on my syllabi, and I always think of, you know, syllabi, we always think of them as sort of a contract between us and our students. And we're, we're like, "If you do these things, this is how I will calculate your grade." And they tend to get longer and longer every year, because there's always things that you didn't think of, and, you know, details that you put in there, maybe to sort of anticipate all the possible things that might happen. But a syllabus is really important, you know, students, they need to know what's expected, they need to have a sense that your class is fair, you know, you have to, it's really important that faculty follow their syllabus, because I think my students always feel like unfair. I don't, there was a comment made today about, you know, students sometimes do get frustrated or mad, but I haven't had a lot of that over the years, because I think, I do try to communicate and make sure that they feel like I was fair. And when in doubt, I tend to err on the side of just a little bit generous, so that at the end of the day, they don't feel like they got the, like I was unfair to them. But it is, it is important for us to keep, you know, to keep our word. And I think, I also think of another important thing for us is the Faculty Association, of course, is our master agreement. It's our formal contract that we have. And, you know, countless, just like the syllabus grows, countless days and weeks over the years have gone into crafting this document. The number of people that have worked on our master agreement, from lawyers to, to staff, to administrators and faculty, it's hard to even imagine how long it took and how much went into that. But there's important details in there, you know? It's a, faculty can count on that document, administrators can use that document. And I, you know, us, but us following through and honoring our agreements is really important, beyond legal implications, which obviously are there. You know, honoring this stuff builds trust, it builds, demonstrates respect, mutual respect, and also fosters collegial relationships, because everything's clear, it's spelled out, you know? Students don't usually get mad if something's clearly in the syllabus, and you show them, "Okay, well, I guess, you know, I knew that." We did have a couple of themes, I noticed, from Joe and Mickey when you presented to the faculty and the staff, surrounding communication. And I appreciate the reminder of your commitment to improving communications continually and, and be, that that be, being a priority. And I would say my one request is this, on behalf of the faculty, is that for decisions that impact our role at this college, we really want to be included in the conversations before decisions are made, not merely informed of the decisions after they're made. I think we do a really good job here, and we really appreciate the rationale, you know, the willingness to take questions about it after it's been done. The rationale is given, that, that's been really good, you know, we didn't always have that, sometimes we'd have, like, no one would tell us why. And I, I really appreciate the whys and all of that. But I do feel like we shouldn't be afraid of the questions during the process of coming up with a solution, because I think when you put more people together to, to be a part of actually creating solutions and synthesizing those, you have more relevant voices included in that, that it leads to a better outcome. So I do hope that we can improve on, sometimes we do this really well. I hope we can improve on the times that we tend to make decisions without involving the people that could have given input into it before the decision was made. I'd like to see us do more of that, because I think we could tap into our available people resources better than what we always, than we necessarily do consistently. So, and also, when we do that, it makes people a lot happier here. You know, you won't make everybody happy, you're always going to have some people who don't like the outcome or the decision that's made, but you're going to have less fires to put out and less frustration if you involve people in the actual part of putting together the solutions, rather than just informing them of them later and then explaining to them why that's the way it's going to be. That's great, but it, it's going to make people frustrated if they're not included more along the way. So, that concludes my report, and...
Thank you.
Looking forward to meeting my students next week.
Don't forget the last paragraph of the syllabus, whatever that may be.
It's, it's a scheduling, no, actually, it's a safety map. We have to include a map of the emergency exits from our classrooms. That's, I think, the last thing on the syllabus.
Good, good. Thank you.
I think our art faculty can use the first week or two to teach about minimalism, which is a style or technique that is characterized by extreme spareness and simplicity. So a nice empty room...
Right.
Could be art, right?
Well, I suggested, you know, the, the desert island approach, you know, you're on a desert island, you need to do photography. What do you do? You forgot your camera. What are you going to do?
Thanks, Melanie, I appreciate it. Johnson County Research Triangle, trustee Lawson, trustee Cross, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Johnson County Research Triangle did not meet this past month. They'll meet again on April 22nd at 7:00 at the Edwards Campus.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Community Colleges, trustee Lawson.
Yes, so Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, I was now the liaison for that. And the next meeting will be March 7th, and I'm waiting to hear back on the agenda items that the state organization will have in the legislative session. I am also appointed to the National Committee for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion for the Association of Community College of Trustees. And we did have our first conference call that discussed RFP language to make sure that our bids are coming into, coming in from diverse candidates, minority business owners, women business owners, small business owners, et cetera. We also discussed some of the nondiscrimination ordinances, and to make sure that that protected class are not, are also included, but also the sexual orientation and gender identity. I reviewed our NDO, and we do need to add that language of gender identity to make sure that our transgender faculty and staff are not discriminated against. And also, I wanted to give some time over to trustee Ingram, because she's also appointed to one of the national committees, if she had anything to add.
I do, and thank you. Let me go ahead, though, and go back to the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, because we had an election in June, and I was elected the Secretary of that organization, but because they have not changed their bylaws, my position runs through June of this year. So I am going ahead and continuing to serve as the Secretary of that organization, but because here we rotate according to the real calendar. And so anyway, we're really excited to have trustee Lawson join us, so thank you very much, and we will be meeting in March. What we found out in our December meeting was that the Executive Director is going to be leaving, and I may have announced that last month, but that is the role that the officers will take, is to handle the selection of a new Executive Director of the KACC. So we're in the process of doing right, that right now, and working on a timeline and trying to get some dates lined up, so we will talk more about that at our March meeting. When it comes to the AACCT, I was named to the Communication and Education Committee. We also had a phone call late last week. Several of our members were not able to participate in that phone call, so we had four topics that we just really skimmed over. One is Generation Z and relating to the new generation, and the mention was that this is the first time that we'll have five generations in the workforce, so that will be a topic that comes up at our Legislative Summit next month. Also, improving the membership and engagement at the National Legislative Summit. It would seem as it is here in Kansas, out of our 19 community colleges, there's probably half of them that are, are kind of making a choice as to whether to attend meetings in the fall or meetings in the spring, so we're just trying to figure out how to best serve our community colleges all across the nation. We also discussed very, very briefly the open electronic records, and then finally, some, some policies and procedures and processes, really, on the selection of at-large members and committees, because I think your committee is still looking for a couple of members. So it was a great conversation, but it's exciting, and I think I speak for Angelina as well, trustee Lawson, I apologize, that, you know, we're really excited to be able to represent. Dr. Cook has represented for a number of years, and we're honored to be able to do the same. So thank you for the time, just...
Report's done.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Cross.
Thank you for the recognition. I, I wanted to thank trustee Lawson and Ingram for raising the issues of diversity. I think, I want to thank this board for at least discussing it during New Business, and I apologize if I snapped at the chair, I apologize for that.
No apology necessary.
But I thank you for the, the discussion of an issue, and these things are difficult to discuss, so while it may have been ridiculous and display, I apologize and appreciate the issues being raised, so.
Thank you, no apology necessary from my viewpoint, but I would also say that trustee Cross and trustee Lawson and Kate, I think, and Dr. Sobchak will be attending NLS in February at the Capitol, and so we wish you the best in, in those meetings as well. Foundation, trustee Musso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Foundation is off to its typically busy start. The Board of Directors of the Foundation met yesterday. Trustee Cross and I attended as liaison from the board. Earlier today, this, as I understand it, the Selection Committee for the 2019 Johnson County of the Year met to begin the process of choosing the Johnson County of the Year. The intent of this award is to recognize someone who has made significant contributions to Johnson County and to Johnson County Community College. The Foundation is currently accepting nomination for new board members. The Board Development Committee will meet on January 30th to evaluate candidates for the 2019-2020 board slate. This process will conclude with a vote on the slate at the Foundation's April Board Meeting. So if you know of someone that you think would be good for the Johnson County Community College Foundation, please get those names to Kate, probably would be the best place to, to send those. The Fin, Foundation Investment Committee will meet on February 5th to review the Quarterly Report of Managed Investments, and the Foundation wanted to pass along their thanks to the trustee and the cabinet for efforts in 2018, including a record-setting, some enchanted evening. That concludes my report.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Cross.
I'd like to direct or request staff and administration to research, I think it's possible, Mr. Patrick Mahomes lives in Johnson County, he'd be...
(laughter)
...with Johnson County of the Year, I'm just throwing that out.
If he wins the Super Bowl.
No, I think we've, he's called me something already.
Trustee Musso meant to say, "When."
We shouldn't be so heavily influenced by videos that we see in a board meeting as they impact that choice. Next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is an area where we deal with a number of routine items. I would entertain a motion unless someone wants to pull an item off the Consent Agenda for further discussion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have no executive session this evening, and I would now, trustee Cross, call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.